Welcome to the regular session of the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors meeting for January 23rd. We always begin our meetings with a question.
I declare the leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So if you are here for the first time, you can find agenda on the back table there. If you're interested in addressing the board, there are also public comment cards that you can fill out and turn into Valmacon there, the board secretary, and she'll make sure that you get on the list. Thank you for attending our meeting. We're going to start with the recognition of school board recognition month.
All right, thank you. So January is school board recognition month, and it's an opportunity to formally thank board members for the many, many hours that they put in. They are, a lot of people don't understand that they are volunteers. These are not paid positions. And they, they work for the betterment of the students in the system. So they are here to make things better for students. They're community advocates that have volunteered countless, countless hours, and it's our opportunity to thank them. If this is the first time you've been to a board meeting, they don't always get thanked like this every day. So this is not, there's usually not signs up thanking them, and they've got a number of cards and gifts that schools have sent them. If you come in February, it'll all be empty. But this is the month that we get a formal meeting with them. And so the Hillsborough School District has a tradition where we read a proclamation to honor our board members. Mayor Steve Callaway, he actually wanted to read this, but tonight he's in Washington D.C.
Excuses.
Priorities. We're starting to learn. So anyway, I will read this in his stead. So proclamation, where the school boards create a vision for what students should know and be able to do, and school boards establish clear standards for student performance, and school boards ensure that student assessments are how to establish standards, and school boards are accountable to the community for operating schools that support student achievement, and school boards align school district resources to ensure that students meet standards, and school boards create a climate that supports the philosophy that all children can learn at high levels, and school boards build collaborative relationships based on trust, teamwork, and shared accountability, and school boards are committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement. Everybody who's there might appreciate you for being a member of the Hillsborough School District Board of Directors and proclaim the month of January 2018 to be school board recognition month. Thank you very much for your service. We appreciate you.
And thank you for the lovely gifts.
You're saying this wild applause after, but that's okay.
He was, that wasn't true. But thank you. All right, so let's move down to the recognition with Casey. The Energy Trust of Oregon. Oh, you're right there at the table now, sorry.
So this is my first chance to recognize folks who are doing a great job. My name is Mark Kran, and the district, Hillsborough School District, your school district, has made resource conservation and energy production a priority during the past several years, implementing renewable programs and energy reducing strategies that have resulted in significant cost avoided savings. A key component of those efforts is a relationship with the Energy Trust of Oregon, or ETO, as I like to call them. The ETO is a resource for customers such as the Hillsborough School District, providing information, cash incentives, and technical assistance to help us invest in energy saving or renewable projects. Indeed, a mark of a great organization is taking advantage of opportunities and programs such as what the ETO offers, organizations like Washington County, Portland Committee College, University of Portland, and Eurom and Hillsborough School District. But you still have to first envision, then execute these smart projects, which is very hard work. Today, we are joined by two of the Hillsborough School District folks who have worked hard to make our schools more energy efficient. The Hillsborough School District Resource Conservation Manager Heidi Burkhardt. And the Hillsborough School District Chief Operations Officer Casey Walertich. And here with a few words from our Energy Trust of Oregon is our Account Manager Randy Isaac.
Good evening. I'm Randy Isaac, with the Account Manager with Energy Trust of Oregon's commercial existing buildings program, and I am the Account Manager that works with Hillsborough School District. I'm part of a specialized team within Energy Trust existing buildings that focuses just on helping schools save energy to keep more dollars in the classrooms. It's a pleasure to be here today to recognize Hillsborough School District's accomplishments tonight with an incentive check for the projects completed at seven area schools within the past year. The school district leveraged incentive bill 1149 funds and Energy Trust of Oregon incentive dollars for an energy services performance contract to maximize the value to the district. And Energy Trust is proud to have played a part. A little bit about Energy Trust really quick. Energy Trust is an independent nonprofit organization serving 1.6 million Oregon customers of TGE, Pacific Power, Northwest Natural Gas, Cascade Natural Gas, and Avista. We help people and businesses use less energy, and we help generate renewable power. We do this because this is the most affordable type of energy, and it's the best for our environment. It's the energy that we save or produce from our own renewable resources. Through our programs, participating customers have saved a combined $2.7 billion on their energy bills since 2002. Those savings will continue to grow year after year, recirculating and helping stimulate the local economy. Hillsborough School District is one of nearly 36,000 businesses and industrial facilities that have worked with the Energy Trust across Oregon. That includes other local projects such as the Chute Park branch of the Hillsborough Public Library, Orkshire Citaranco, and the Washington County Office Building. Today, we are celebrating Hillsborough School District as it achieves its energy goals and helps raise the bar for school energy efficiency projects around the state. It really does set a great example that with community support and help from programs like Energy Trusts, you can enjoy the benefits of those incredible energy saving technologies. When we look at the numbers for these schools, they're outstanding. Collectively, these improvements are expected to achieve annual energy savings of nearly $97,000 a year. The project also keeps more than 375 tons of carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere, which is the equivalent of removing more than 100 cars for Oregon roads for a year. So that's $97,000 a year that can be used to help keep students right here at the Hillsborough School District. It took a lot of planning and teamwork to reach those savings goals, and I want to acknowledge the great work of several people. First, Facilities Manager Jim Peterson was involved in this. Resource Conservation Manager Heidi Burkhardt, who supports energy efficiency efforts for the Hillsborough District. And Casey Walertich, the Chief Officer who has been taking care of the finances and supporting these measures as well. I'm representing here tonight as Emmeresco, a contractor that helped arrange the financing grouping to get these projects done and to deliver the projects on time and on budget and to create these savings. So it's a great honor to celebrate these energy efficiency achievements with you here. It's my pleasure to present this check. Who would like to receive it?
I think Heidi will say it. Well, I'll have a hand on it.
Okay, so on behalf of Energy Trust of Oregon, I'm presenting this check for $65,820, which represents the incentives that the Energy Trust has paid over the last year.
A little closer.
Love it. Receiving money.
One, two, three. Only one more, just in case. One, two, three.
Okay, so we're working, looking forward to partnering with Hillsborough School District on its plan and future projects to save even more dollars and energy and get that money back in the class. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We're at item five, which means that we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Second.
It's been moved by Kim and seconded by Mark to approve the agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? All right, if you would like to, is there, if you would like to approve the agenda as printed, as moved by Kim and seconded by Mark, please say aye.
Aye.
If you would not, please say no. That motion varies our agendas. And with that, we're going to recess our board meeting, and then we're going to convene the meeting of the Local Contract Review Board, which in this case is the same people. So this is a public hearing of the Local Contract Review Board to allow comments on the Hillsborough School District draft findings of fact supporting specific exemptions from competitive bidding assignments for the following projects. Use of the construction management general contractor process for the Brookwood Elementary School replacement project. Use of the request for proposal with competitive bid process for synthetic turf fields in 2018 to 2022. Special procurements and exemptions from competitive bidding authorizing specific product specifications for HVAC control systems, wireless box systems, fire alarm systems, roofing products and systems, lock and door hardware systems, mobile security PM system, and digital recording systems. This is a time for public testimony. The board will have an opportunity for questions and comments after the public hearing is closed. Any patron who wishes to speak should complete a board agenda card located on the back table and submitted to the board secretary. So the hearing is open. Is there any public testimony related to the Local Contract Review Board business? So we complete a card on the back table and turn into Valmacon. I don't think that we do have any value received yet. So we'll wait just a second to make sure that we are giving folks a chance. All right, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed then, since it doesn't appear that there's any public comment, and we'll continue with the Local Contract Review Board session. So that's you, Adam.
Yes, yes, thank you. You'll recall that we asked once before when we initially started the bond program to convene the Local Contract Review Board to allow us to use the construction management.
General contractor.
General contractor, thank you. CMGC method for construction refill elementary school. We now have some additional things that we want to bring to your attention that are going to help us expedite our building projects and also help us to standardize around some of the products that we're using in those buildings. Rick Renaud with Orangeville Management Group is here tonight. He is the expert on these projects and is here willing and able to answer any questions, specific questions that you have around this. But again, this is, what we're asking you will help us to expedite these projects and also standardize around specific products that you've mentioned, the HVAC, the locking hardware, those types of products that we want to standardize throughout the district. So.
Thank you, Adam. Good evening, Superintendent Scott, Board Chair Allen, Board Administration, and those of you in the audience. Pleased to be in front of you again tonight to try to help us look for ways to do projects more efficiently. We really have three types of findings in front of you tonight. One is a CMGC project for the Brookwood project. You have acted on those before in the past, both as this board and other boards. We also have one where we want to use a request for proposal with competitive bids to build high quality synthetic fields, and the schools are going to do that with this upcoming bond. And then we put together a long list of things that we would like to have your approval to exempt from competitive bidding so that we make sure across your buildings, we use the same systems we believe will be easier for your maintenance department to maintain, and there's some real advantages if we can get these types of systems approved. I will answer any questions you have about either one of the findings. I will tell you that Jim Peterson and his staff was very helpful in working with the maintenance department to really focus in on what products that we think that we could install that would really save us some money and make this more efficient. So with that, we have answered any questions we might have about any of the findings that are in front of you tonight.
Okay, start with Jackie and Mark.
My question is on the request for proposal with competitive bid for the synthetic turf. Number three, under findings of facts, says the RFP CP should, will result in efficient construction. Is it, that confused you a little bit?
Okay, so in construction, we tend to abbreviate maybe more than we should. So what we're looking to do is approve a contractor to do all of the work below the synthetic field, to prepare the synthetic field to be installed on a pad that is properly graded, it has all the right drainage. And so we wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to hire somebody who's done that before and had the qualifications to do it and build a really high quality base. In addition to that, we want to go through a competitive process using an RFP to select the type of fields we're going to put on top of that pad. We have done that before in the past, but that process has expired, and we want to use the same process again. The good news is we have a lot of synthetic fields to build in this bond. We want to make sure we have a qualified contractor to install it, and we go through a process to feel like the turf that is installed has a long warranty and is installed properly as well. Does that help?
No. So I guess my question is, is it should result or will result in efficient construction? Does it have should and will, and so that should be one or the other, or maybe it just fully carries?
I believe it should be should.
Okay, okay. That was my one question.
Okay.
In regards to the idea of standardizing across the building for HVAC, wireless, hall of alarms and stuff, do you have this to do?
Sure.
By standardizing that way and buying, are we going to see any cost savings by buying sort of in volume for multiple pieces at once, or were we already expecting to do this one?
Great question. I think when we share with these vendors the amount we want to buy through the bond, I think we can expect some savings on the buy. So that would be the first piece of savings we would look forward to. The second piece of savings will be as we maintain the buildings after the work has been completed and installed. So I think there's two opportunities for savings in both, or hard to get savings in both.
Kim? My question is about the Trimco roofing, and only because I spent time with Reynolds School Board, Board Member recently, where they just also done roofing work, and he spoke very highly of the Trimco roofing products. And I'm curious about the warranty, what is one of the things that, one of the reasons why they, as a school board, selected that product, was about the life and the warranty of the product, and I'm curious.
Sure. I think with Trimco, we look for several benefits. One benefit is, as a manufacturer, they only approve qualified contractors to install their product, and we believe we get benefit from that in the quality of the installation. They also, as a manufacturer, work real hard for the material that is installed has already been proven to be a great roof product on schools and many other types of schools. They also give us a quality control inspector during the course of instruction at no cost to the district. So we get benefits from their quality control and their observation. And then one of the things that they do is, when they provide a warranty for a roof, there's the roofing product and then the flashings that connect the roof to the siding. Their warranty covers both. So we actually get, I think, a great warranty from them. And this district has used Trimco a lot in the past, and we're just looking for approval to continue that on with this new bond project.
Thank you.
Do you have a question, Mark?
In our work to pass along and communicate with the community, we talked a lot about the synthetic fields in high schools, and this is probably in there, maybe I didn't notice. It looks like we're doing three at the three new elementary schools as well. Is that case?
That's the goal. We have not completely designed those buildings yet, so we're not entirely sure where our budget is going to take us on those new buildings. But our goal is to have a synthetic turf field at each of the new elementary schools.
Oh, so including in here was aspiration?
At this point, yes. We are going to do everything we can to make sure that's included in each of the projects. So we will bid it either way. Many times what happens when we take a look at doing a synthetic turf field at a school, we will probably bid it both ways, just to make sure we understand what would it cost if we just would have put in natural grass and what it could cost if we put in a synthetic turf field. When we studied that in the past and we put a synthetic turf field in at South Meadows, we found that the amount of play for both district students and community use really increases when we have synthetic. So it was actually Superintendent Mr. Scott who said, take a look at it. So we want to take a look at it, but it starts with approval from you, and then we'll go through a process to get some bids.
One of the things we talked about quite a bit with the high schools was that they were lit, lighted turf fields, so banned football practice after school, people can use them. Are we planning for illumination at the elementary school ones as well? Will they just be field?
Ideally, yes.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions. Do you have a question?
Thank you very much.
All right, so Adam?
Yes.
We completed the findings of fact, and now we're at two vote test. There is none, right? So we're now at B to B, approved?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
To approve, does we need to, can it be one sentence that incorporates all the facts of finding, or do you need the details in the?
It can be done as a single motion.
So, Madam Chair, I move that the board approves the draft findings of fact supporting specific exemptions from competitive bidding as presented in this evening's public hearing and listed above in the situation page.
So it has been moved by Kim and seconded by Erica to approve the draft findings of fact. Is there any discussion about that? Questions? So in this motion, we're going to be voting on two, B, one, two, three, three A through F, correct? So one, the use of CMGC for Brookwood, two, use of alternate procurement methods, and three, exemption from competitive bidding authorization, right? So it's been moved by Kim and seconded by Erica to approve these drafts, draft findings of fact, and grant specific exemptions from competitive bidding requirements for the items that I just said. If you would like to approve the findings of fact and the specific exemptions, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If you would not, please say no. That motion carries. That's the only motion we need to make right now, right? Yeah, okay. All right, so then I'm going to adjourn the meeting of the Local Contract Review Board, and I'm going to reconvene our, we're session of our school board meeting. Again, same people. So that brings us to audience time. And our agenda, we do have several public comment cards, but they are all related to policy JHC in the School District Talk Center, which is a little bit later in our agenda, so we'll be hearing that public comment at that time in the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the board about a different topic? And if so, I don't have a public comment card for anything unrelated. So if you do, you want to give a card to Valmacon, we can hear you now. Okay, all right, so we'll move right along then, and we're going to head into item nine on our agenda, which is reports and discussions. And we're starting with the Hillsborough School District Parent Advisory Committee report.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Olga Sunea, Director of Family Resources. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Dora Lopez, our newly hired family resource manager for the district. Dora Lopez is bilingual. She speaks English, Spanish, and Spanish. So please welcome Dora, who will be introducing our parent advisory council, and she do have a presentation for you tonight.
Thank you, Olga. Good evening. My name is Dorothea Lopez, Hillsborough School District Family Resource Manager. It's an honor for me to work with the Hillsborough School District Parent Advisory Committee PAC. And now, please allow me to introduce the four members of the PAC who will speak about the purpose of this committee, their goals, their accomplishments, their recommendation for this school year.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Marisol Carino. Soy presidenta del grupo de PACs.
Good evening. My name is Marisol Carino, Vice President of the Hillsborough School District PAC.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Javier Leon. He's the President of the Committee Assistant of the Pairs. Good evening. My name is Javier Leon, Parent Advisory Committee Vice President.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Karen Moreno. I am the Secretary of the PAC.
Good evening. My name is Karen Moreno, and I'm the Secretary of the PAC.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Everte Diaz, and I'm the Director of the Grupo de PAC.
Good evening. My name is Everte Diaz, and I'm a member of PAC.
Primero vamos a hablar acerca del propósito y de las metas. Como grupo de PAC, nos enfocamos en empoderar a otros padres para la participación y el involucramiento dentro de las escuelas. Seguimos apoyando a los grupos de PAC ya establecidos y a los que están por formarse.
I suppose we can talk about the PAC goals and purpose. As a PAC group, we focus on empowering other parents so they can participate and become involved in schools. We continue to support the PAC groups that are already in place and that are supporting.
Algunas de las metas en las que nos estamos enfocando es en apoyar a los padres que tengan una mejor comunicación dentro de las escuelas.
So another goal is to help parents so they can have better communication with schools.
También nos enfocamos en apoyar y capacitar a los diferentes grupos de PACs.
We also encourage support to all different PAC groups.
Voy a hablarle de las capacitaciones de PAC. El PAC tenemos diferentes talleres extraterrestres y nacionales.
So we're not going to be talking about different workshops that a PAC has. So through our PAC, we have different state and national workshops.
También estamos, tenemos nuestras juntas del distrito que son nacionales.
We also have our district meeting, the remountments.
Lo más importante es que nos enfocamos en un futuro académico de nuestros hijos.
And the most important thing is that we focus on the academic future for children.
Nuestra meta es graduarnos a la preparatoria y prepararlos para una universidad.
Our goal is for them to graduate from high school and prepare them for college.
Les voy a hablar un poco de los logros del PAC.
I'm going to talk about some of the accomplishments of PAC.
Hemos tenido varios logros en los últimos tres años.
We have several achievements in the last three years.
Una cantidad de padres formando sus propios PACs en diferentes escuelas.
A number of friends have formed their own PACs at different schools.
Ha crecido el programa dual.
The dual related program has grown.
Por primera vez hemos dialogado con la Mesa Directiva. Estamos colaborando ambos.
For the first time, we have had our with the board. We're collaborating together.
Estamos contentos de que este año tenemos más trabajadores de alcance, el 30% más que el año pasado.
We're happy that this year we have more outreach creations, 30% of the last year.
Gracias a nuestra directora de programas federales que nos da su apoyo. Gracias a nuestra directora de programas federales que nos da su apoyo, la señora Olga.
Thanks to our Director of Federal Programs who gives us her support. And this is Olga.
Antes de empezar, nos gustaría dar las gracias a ustedes, personal de la Mesa Directiva, por su apoyo y ayuda. A nuestra directora por su arduo trabajo y a todos los que hicieron posible que esto fuera realidad. Before we begin, we would like to thank you, all the board members, for your support and help to our director for her hard work and everyone who was there to make this possible. The graphic we are presenting over there, 80s, was really spot making this possible that out eighteen schools out of the 30s within our school district, we have eighteen outreach workers in eighteen schools to improve the relationship between families and the students with the staff members. We also informed that nine of those schools, we have their own parent advisory meeting. Esto es de los logros de los cuales hablábamos. hacer posible que en 18 de las 36 escuelas tengamos trabajadores de alcance para así mejorar la relación de nuestras familias y los estudiantes con el personal. Así mismo les hacemos saber que nueve de las escuelas cuentan con nuestro grupo de padres asesores. Ahora, Marisol, les va a presentar una gráfica y seguiré con ustedes. Now, Marisol, please present another graphic, and I will continue with you.
Bueno, pues como ustedes saben, tenemos grupos de PAC ya establecidos en algunas escuelas elementares. En esta gráfica se muestra la participación de padres latinos en diferentes reuniones como la noche de regreso a la escuela.
So as you know, we have PAC groups already in place at some of the elementary schools. This graph shows the team of participation in different meetings that just the back to school.
Cabe mencionar que esta gráfica de actividades de solo tres meses.
It is worth mentioning that this graph shows only three months of activities.
Esta es una prueba de cómo coleccionamos información en la participación de las escuelas.
This is a sample of information we gathered regarding participation in the schools.
No tenemos registradas las 36 escuelas aquí, pero una de las metas es que estas barras suban el nivel de participación de nuestros padres.
Now, we don't have the 36 schools listed here, but one of the goals is that these bars raise the level of participation of our parents.
Ahora nos gustaría hacer algunas sugerencias, unas propuestas o recomendaciones para seguir contando con su apoyo y ayuda para hacer posible y tener más personal nosante maestros bilingues y plurales, a su vez ellos tenían acceso a más capacitación pedagógica y diversidad plurala. También queremos crear y contar con más talleres, programas de apoyo y capacitación para supervisión los padres de nuestro distrito. Now, we would like to make some suggestions, proposals, or recommendations, whichever it is for this. To continue count with your support here in order to make this possible to have more bilingual, non-cultural teachers who will access to more cultural, relevant to regional and cultural diversity training. Also, we want to create and have more support programs, training, or workshops to help our parents excel within our district. Por último, lo más importante, nos gustaría contar con más programas de apoyo durante después de clases para los estudiantes de nuestro distrito. Matemáticas, lectura, escritura como materias principales. Lastly, and more important, we would like to have your support to carry in more programs during and after school for our students within our district. The focus would be on math, reading, and writing as the main subjects. Thank you.
So now, please, we would like to respond any questions you may have. Thank you.
Do you have any questions or comments?
So I have a question. What do you, why do you think you've seen an increase in parent participation? What is it that you attribute that to?
I want to ask you, we have motivated more parents.
Una de las cosas que hemos llevado bastante a los padres es que debido al involucramiento que hemos tenido, ellos están acortando más y dando más a sus hijos, por ejemplo, las tareas.
So one of some of the things that we have noticed that has motivated parents is for them to be able to help their students in homework.
Aparte de eso, muchos de nuestros padres nos hemos ayudado bastante.
And part of that as well, us parents who go back to school and to continue studying as well.
Estamos estudiando yes y algunas otras carreras relacionadas como la esto.
And we study English in another careers as well, which related to teaching.
So, and lastly, one of the more important things is that we have more outreach community workers in each school. So one of the goals of those workers is to involve, engage more parents and have a better communication between schools and parents. Basically, parents have to be partners of the school, so that's the angle of our department. And working with the parents, we learn their ideas and we are engaging them to support us in that way.
I have a question. Did you get to it?
I want to ask you, there are a lot of questions about the graph where the families that were attending the different events. How have you seen that more attend to events? Have there been changes or improvements to make to make it easier for families to attend?
Yeah. So just going back to the graphic where you have different families attending the bar graphic. Has there been anything that you have changed in either outreach or in the meetings that have enabled families to be able to attend?
Ahora, lo que estamos haciendo es que la participación de los padres la estamos y la estamos llevando a cabo con información que nos dan trabajadores de alcance y las estamos poniendo en la gráfica. Esta gráfica, la última que ven aquí de 243, la amarilla, es la última que hemos tenido. Pero a las demás escuelas no se ve, no se ve, lo que está en rojo no se ve todavía porque todavía no tenemos al 100% la participación de los padres dentro de las escuelas.
So...
Ah, gracias.
So the information that we have here, parent participation, we see them through the liaisons. And the 243 is the latest one that we received, the one in yellow over there. And the ones on the red, it's really hard to see them. But we don't really have much information because we haven't seen that or the participation of parents hasn't been 100%.
Just have one more answer for that.
So another thing that we are working is to work together with the community outreach workers in the schools, the parents, and all other... What is happening is that we have a lot of committees in each school. So those leaders, those parent leaders, they are supporting us. And also, we accommodate our events in a way that the parents can come to our events. And also, as we thought, the main goal is to help our students.
Thank you very much for your work and for coming tonight to speak to us. My question is about the family outreach liaisons. And maybe if each of the four members of the PAC could speak to that. That's a big part of the district's work in this area is to provide that FTE in the buildings. Is it enough? Do we need more FTE? Do we need more buildings? Has that program matured into what you're really needing that position to be? And that's speaking of the family outreach liaisons.
Muchas gracias por haber venido hoy, por su trabajo también. And a little bit about our work of the alcance. If this has worked, if you have the methods that you have, and if we need more, if we need more, if we are good. About our work of the alcance.
Si, debemos de reconocer el gran trabajo que ellos hacen porque de alguna manera es la conexión principal entre los padres, especialmente hablamos español, si los trabajadores de alcance son bilingues, mucho mejor. Porque de esa forma alcanzamos a nuestros padres, damos la información que necesitamos y recibimos la participación de ellos.
So we recognize their hard work and their liaisons, their connections between the schools and the parents. And if they're bilingual, it's even better because it's how we receive this information and we share this with the parents as well.
Y sí, definitivamente creo que necesitamos más trabajadores de alcance para poder lograr alcanzar las demás escuelas que nos hacen falta. Porque esta es nuestra meta, tratar de involucrar a más padres de diferentes escuelas. Y si no tenemos el trabajador de alcance para poder hacer la conexión, es un poquito más lento el proceso.
And we definitely need more liaisons, and that's one of our goals as well, to have more so we can, so we can connect with the parents from those other schools as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We are at 9B North West Freedom EST update with the... Yes, I saw her. I'm hiding. In North West Freedom EST Board members.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the invite. My name is Ms. I'm a Director of the EST and I represent the Hillsborough School District Bantry area. I live in the Scholz area, which is south of Hillsborough, which is a bad address. And so it sometimes confuses people, but I am Hillsborough School District. My kids went to Ronin, South Meadows, J.B. Thomas first, and South Meadows, and then Hill High. So I've been in the area a long time and was actually a Hillsborough School District Board Member for a couple of years, right after the last one was passed. So a lot of what you guys are doing tonight, we all did too. And I know in the workshop tonight you talked a little bit about the EST previewing the local service event. So our boards are a little different than your board. We have nine members, five of which are elected members. And so, for example, I'm Zone Three, and I represent the Hillsborough School, the attendance area. You as the board within the Hillsborough School Board, you are who lacks my position. So many of you weren't on here when this came up for lectures a couple of years ago. So other zones, we have 20 school districts in the EST. So one of the zones has like six or seven of those, all those boards vote on that position. So that's five of them. And then the other four positions are appointed positions. We as a board then appointed those four positions. And we have somebody from Health and Social Services. We have somebody from higher ed, somebody from business, and somebody from at-large. So to wrap this up, if you want to go right to Hillsborough, a lot of people ask, what is EST? Rob Saxton, this superintendent, had a pretty catchy phrase that I'm not going to use, but really it's sort of a cooperative, if you would, of school districts. Oh, thank you. All right. So this is the first page. It just talks a little bit about what EST does with Hillsborough. The first is early childhood, early childhood special education. And the part that you as a board or you as a district are responsible for is the child find part. So we as an EST help you with that, with evaluations. But the actual education of early childhood and early intervention in early childhood special ed is through a grant through ODE, which uses the body that educates the students. So we also have the Death of Party Hearing Program at Corona, low incident regional programs, and then school program slots. So we're on the next page, which this is a better graph. So you as a district, the bulk of what you spend your money on is in special student services. And one of the places that EST can leverage its being a big organization is that we can help with things like autism specialists, the OTs, occupational therapists in the district, Rob and some others. Lately, actually, we've been helping districts with grant writing. That's a spot where we have some really good grant writers, and so we can help districts who want to write grants. Any questions you have?
We've benefited from many of the grants.
Recently.
Really been instrumental over the last couple of years, the EST grant writers and their collaboration with our staff.
I was excited about the new one for the High, the biotech. So I've come a couple of times a year, three or four times a year. Just to give you an idea of what's going on with us. And anytime you guys can call me or email me with questions.
We have a couple of questions. We have one in the next video. My name is, thank you for your service. It's been fun to watch the growth as EST has catered their services to our region and to watch you help lead us to work with regional. And really appreciate your board participating in our legislative summit too, I think. It's just to show legislators our unified voice, but also that we're working together in so many areas. I really feel great to talk to you, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Kim.
I just want to say, thanks for coming and giving us a note, just for you to know what's going on. The thing that we here was talking about is the great, we're really excited to be able to.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Okay. We are at 9C Dual Credit and Career Technical Education Board.
Thank you very much. I'm here with my colleague Brooke Novak tonight to catch you up on our career and college pathways work. It's really hard to know where to start and how to capture all this information in ten or fewer minutes, but we're going to give it our best update on exactly where we are with this project and our successes as a link. Before we get started, I want to recognize a few folks who are here. Kelly Purdy in the back deserves a lot of credit for everything we're about to say.
Yeah.
And in terms of dual credit... In terms of our dual credit relationships with higher ed partners and the work that we do with our teachers to get students college-level coursework, Kelly's been a leader, and not to mention the fact that she's our CTE guru and has been a leader in expanding our program. As well as Brooke Novak, who deserves a lot of credit. But we'll get to her in just a second. I also want to thank Dale Spitzer, who works with our high school principals. She just ran out of room, I think. And our high school leadership teams, teachers, and counselors who've really started to think outside of the box about how to get 100% of our students graduating with a plan for post-secondary success. And I want to give a shout out to our Citizens Curriculum Advisory Committee and the board for supporting new courses that we've been developing and this work in general. I know you guys are champions for this project and seeing school differently for students and creating better systems. So thank you very much. You know, the goal of our project is to create guaranteed and viable pathways for all students to graduation and post-secondary success. We think this is also the responsibility of our community and not just educators within our schools. Our goals for this career and college pathway project have been to get every student access to CTE programming, access to college-level coursework and the support systems they need to do, things like submit FAFSA's and pursue their education after they graduate. We've used what's called a collective impact model in order to make the gains that we have. And I don't want to bore you with the details, but it's something that was affirmed for us when we recently visited Nashville Public Schools and learned that their city, their Chamber of Commerce, their business partners, and their educators are all working together to create career pathways in an organization that's even larger than ours. And we don't have a lot of partners in our region who are doing this type of work. But the strategic partnerships that we have and the backbone organization that we formed where our city, our chamber, and our school district have employees who work together daily on the topic of creating pathways for students, is something that we're seeing great gains in that. I do want to kick to my colleague Brooke Nova, who without her networking skills and her energy and charisma around this work and also her strategic linking daily around this work, we did not see these metrics growing the way that we have. And so I'm going to let her describe it.
Travis is so kind to even set up the microphone almost to my level here. So really it is a huge partnership and work, not only with Travis as well, but also our colleague, Becky King Smith, who as a parent helps a lot in the dual credit work as well. So in that collective impact model, I think what's so important is very early on we set up clear metrics around these five indicators. And this is what helps us to measure our growth or seeing pockets of what do we need to do to move the work forward. This has been captured over the last four years. What we use are outside indicators of data. So using either our national parent house data, our FAFSA report that's generated from the federal government. We also capture the internship data from the Hillsborough Chamber of Commerce. All of those metrics is what we collect to make sure that we're moving the work forward. And to see, see what else we need to be doing. What Travis is very true, it is such a collective of our community, which makes it so fun to bring together our post-secondary partners, to bring together industry partners. Over time, what we're seeing is more and more dual credit opportunities and partnerships being formed. And that's been such a great opportunity for our students then to take advantage of what's offered in all of our schools in that way to not only be earning principal credit, but post-secondary credit at the same time. What Kelly has done, so we really need to give this to Kelly, is create also such a collaborative framework. Monthly, these partners are coming together in that checks and balances system of how is it going in your school? What's coming up in post-secondary? Let's continue those conversations to move the work forward. How can we continue to grow dual credit? How are we making sure that we're messaging this to students and staff and parents in a way that makes sense for them? And that monthly dialogue and conversation really has moved the needle forward and the work forward in this area. Something else that is a continual dialogue and discussion is how do we bring our partners together? Not only in Hillsborough School District, but then bringing them outside of it as well. So the pictures that are featured here are counselors at Portland Community College, where we had an opportunity in December to see what's going on at the Rock Creek campus. For community college faculty and advisors to be having that discussion directly with school counselors to talk about how do we get better in that communication? How do we get better in that advisory work? So that was this picture right here to the, that you're left. And then on the other side is a post-secondary partner coming to one of our counseling centers and talking to students and advising them in post-secondary education, application, financial and scholarship information. We also are seeing growth in students requesting more and more internships, which is a metric that we've seen growth in as well. And so this is from our Hillsborough Chamber of Commerce saying our students are requesting that, which also insurance is helping us to find partners to make sure that students have that hands-on learning opportunity, that they're getting a classroom experience, but then also that that experience out in our, in our work world, in our workforce here in Hillsborough, to have that experience to connect the learning that they have in the classroom to the community. What's really exciting, what's really exciting is four years ago, we had 19 career and technical education programs and next year we'll have 32. So over a short amount of time, we've really been able to support the growth in career and technical education in the Hillsborough School District and how we have done that truly is with the partnerships. And then also looking at high wage, high demand data to see in Hillsborough, how do we also help to be an economic development partner in this work? It was amazing that Hillsborough is at under 1,000 people now. So with that, how do we make sure that we're connecting our students in the right direction as Hillsborough continues to grow? So in the last two years, we've seen a 30% growth just in current technical education programming. And that also is such a help too with financial resources and supports from not only our construction bond that just was passed bills for measure $98. So quickly I'll highlight just some of the ones that are coming on board for next year, which is noted by kind of purple colored star. So within Century High School, we're adding a new component of computer programming to the computer technology program. Then further ahead, we're looking at developing a microelectronics program as well, maybe a class in cybersecurity as well. We know that that is of high growth, high demand and also an interest of our students. Also next year, we're starting a construction technologies program at Glencoe High School. We know that the trades industry is one of growth and one that we need to make sure that we're offering to our students as well. Animal sciences, which has been such a voice of our student feedback, because we also survey our students every year, that animal science is one that students have been requesting, asking that we provide. That will be coming on board at Hill High next year. As well as, and that's a great, our Northwest Promise Partner noted, biotechnology is also being developed. We were the recipients of a $440,000 Oregon Department of Education career tech ed, which is going to make that possible to really equip that classroom with what's needed to really make sure our students have that transferable skill of using lab equipment in the classroom to industry. We also are bringing on to another computer science, computer programming course too at Hillsborough High School. At Liberty will bring sustainable agriculture and sustainable design onboard and future development. We'll be looking at a decent mechanics program as well. Once again, looking at the trades industry and making sure that we're aligned with high growth, high demand. Also, you know, the continuation of looking at big picture, that's something that's offered at Miller Education Center as well as we're bringing in a career and technical education program at Miller in the fields of agricultural science. And then at Hillsborough Online Academy, they're starting a criminal justice and law programs during next year, which is a great opportunity for students. Hillsborough Online is a great hub for it, as you know, that's right connected. Hillsborough Police Downtown, the Washington County Courthouse is right in the hub, Washington County Sheriff's Department, so what a great opportunity to partner with our downtown resources with Hillsborough Online. And the pack we need to do.
So we'll continue, thank you for, we'll continue to try to build out programming in our existing high schools to use our property that we already own and the facilities that we can build onto easily. But we're also in contact with the city of Hillsborough and the Economic Development Department, talking about the potential partnerships we could have as Block 67 and the Health and Education District expands downtown. Whether that's Block 67 or our own facilities there across the street at Miller East, we're exploring possibilities of downtown programming. One of the steps in doing that is figuring out how to get students. The question that we get is how can my student access that fantastic biotech? And so Carol Hatfield, our transportation director, her team have been supportive of figuring out a transit model whereby students will be able to get on a bus and go to their high school in the morning, get breakfast and then hop into a transit system where they go down to the fairgrounds. This is the park and ride right there at the Washington County Fairgrounds. Either at the park and ride or the tennis courts adjacent where there are these stage buses sometimes. They'll be able to hop on a bus that we take them to another school, have a condensed block of first and second period and then potentially bus back to the hub and back to their schools for lunch. They can do that in the afternoon chunk as well. So we're working on a transit system so students can access programming at any of the schools, but remain at their own high school of the student of Century or Liberty next to Millie. So obvious connections with our strategic plan. What we've heard from our students in thousand interviews with high school students about what they want to see in Hillsborough programming, as well as with our extracurricular connections and our, you know, everything we're doing in HSD, this is just one piece of it. But we think this is a powerful transformation of our system for students. Our bond has become a huge advantage for us in expanding programming just at the right time, as has measure 98. Measure 98 is very specific to high school, as you know. But we've learned recently that allows us to back down into middle school after students graduate from seventh grade. We can use money supporting them in a summer bridge programs or an eighth grade. And I want to highlight the fact that this career and college pathways conversation does go down to pre-K and kindergarten. We're seeing career days in kindergarten where students are identifying, you know, what careers they want to explore when they're older. And this is a K-12 effort, although measure 98 is focused mostly on high school.
One thing I would add is as we're adding more career and technical education programs, we're also very mindful on how do we also introduce that earlier on to students. And I think last, last month, when our CTE teacher proposing new pathways, they had referenced two that we're looking at right now. So starting after school program from middle school that is about to begin in connecting, investing students in an after-school Tuesday, Thursday model to connect students from middle to those CTEs programs at the high school level to start exposing them to what does it look like in health sciences? What does it look like in manufacturing, computer programming, et cetera? Another model that we're also doing, I need to give a shout out to Miguel Chuliver over there at Hillsborough High School who's helped so much is a summer after school, or yeah, summer middle school program. We ran it for two years, called C-Play Day, and we're going to continue that with the help of our career and technical education or grant that we received from ODE. Now though, really looking at helping to connect students to every pathway at Hillsborough High School. So South Meadows students being in the summer program, looking at in that career or technical education field. So how do we continue to grow and develop that in ways that we make sure our middle school students are connected to CTE?
So really next steps for us are, we met on Friday with Adam and talked about our process for engaging all of our high schools and how do we construct our new CTE programs and improve our facilities for this. And so I do want to give one last shout out to Beth and Adam and Mike for getting a bond passed. Kim and the board as well. This is just a really exciting time to be in our high schools. And so I encourage you, if you want to come to the steering committee on April 5th, you can learn more about this project, but I know you guys are supportive of this on a lot of different levels. So happy to answer any questions that we have tonight about where we're headed or where we think.
Kim has a question.
My comments are both your team and also for board members. I'm just back from doing some statewide work where there's a really big interest. You know, OSBA represents not only K-12, but community college. So it's always fun when we're trying to talk about advocacy together. But real question is probably not in this short session, but in the next session for fully funding. Measure 98 changing the roles so that it's not just eighth through 12th grade, but really being incredibly thoughtful about career development and kids thinking about at a younger age. And also a real interest that I hadn't seen before with community college for seamless dual credit. There's still some sticky points even in our state universities. Community college really seems finally interested in helping us. They are also experiencing it. And just statewide, there being a real interest in that transferable credit being exactly what it's supposed to be. I think that just needs dual credit to continue to be such a huge benefit and not with a A P I D testing. So just kudos. And for anyone who wants to continue to be involved in that work, you know that there will be lots of places to plug in at a state, now we live a little bit state by state, but we're moving that work forward.
Thank you. Thanks for your advocacy on that. I just want to add to that, give the, there's a huge role for the Higher Education Coordinating Commission right now to help our community colleges and universities see eye to eye on how to accept those credits. And that will, that'll be a huge benefit to our K-12 systems once there's clarity in how that works. And so we'll continue to develop those partnerships, one to one, and then help support, you know, advocating that our students credit the acceptance for court credit or elected credit at universities. Thank you.
My question is about the standardization of dual credits.
Thank you for having us. So that leads us to 9C Graduation Rates Report. But before Dale, that's who can be you, but while you're giving ready, graduation rates report, no?
I can share, I guess it's not public until Thursday.
Oh, so we're.
So I can do a little happy dance.
Okay, so great, thank you. Oh, thank you. Oh, so I'm using mine from Wednesday, so I must have taken it up, sorry. They made my notes during our agenda review, so I'm sorry, just kidding. Okay, before we move in, is I guess is the item E, right? Oh, my gosh.
D.
Oh, it's D now, huh? Okay, okay. D, enter this for transfers with that. Perfect. Okay, but before you go back, I just, I know that we were talking a little bit earlier about measure 101 and how that impacts us. So it's 815 and it looks like it's passing 63 to 36, so that's. Take it away.
All this applause, and I don't believe that my item here is going to generate that necessarily. Mine is just to kind of give a quick overview and heads up about open enrollment, which is a process that has been in place for the last six years in the state of Oregon. And it's a pretty prescribed process where we kind of get the board notified about it in January. Then you all will act on whether or not to participate in open enrollment in terms of accepting students. And then any available slots will be announced to the general public by March 1st. Those applications are accepted throughout the month of March. And then if there are more applicants, there's slots available, then an equitable lottery process will be held to determine who receives those slots. So we have participated every year that the process has been in place. And I would anticipate the board's will to be that we continue that, to continue being open to, to students from outside our district transferring into our district through that process. We do like to be pretty mindful of where our schools are at and what they can absorb based on their current enrollment and what they anticipate their status being for the upcoming year. So we definitely check in each of our schools on our proposed plan to make sure that, that they indeed could possibly either offer or not any slots for out of district students. So, but our recommendation is that, that we do move forward. And if you agree, then we next month would bring to you a proposal that would outline both the overall number of slots and then the location where those slots will exist.
Jackie in Denmark.
Oh, I just had a question. It's mostly clarification for me is we're currently conducting the priority process. Is that something that, do I understand that correctly as to what the priority process is? And does that change every year?
So we have been holding what we call a priority window for in district transfer students. So students who live within Hillsborough School District and want to transfer to another school within our district. We try to hold that in January to give students who are resident students kind of first opportunity to request moves to other schools if that's something they know is coming up for them in the upcoming year. Or students who may already be on a transfer, perhaps it's only one year at a time and they want to renew that transfer for the following school year. They can request it during the month of January. And the reason being that we want to try to give that consideration to students within our boundaries before then offering that opportunity to students who don't.
Okay, thank you.
Since we've been participating, what's sort of the ratio of applicants versus spots? Like, do we find ourselves often in a situation where we're rejecting applicants because we don't have enough spots?
Not usually, although it's very interesting because it's slightly arbitrary how we come up with the overall number of slots. But it's amazing how the number of applications we get can just bump right up against that number. So we typically do around 30-ish slots for open enrollment. And the last couple of years, we've been, we've been right there, so.
So I, I think we seem to be kind of bored with your claim, it sounds like to me.
Right. So we'll bring the more detailed proposals.
Thanks, Beth. Okay, let's move next to the local wellness program, annual assessment.
In your more packet, there is our local wellness program, annual assessment required by our policy EFA regarding district wellness program. The annual assessment is conducted by our district level wellness team. We have it's represented, representing the nutrition services department, our physical education instructors and our risk management staff. So the standards that are outlined in our policy look at nutrition education and promotion and standards for child nutrition programs, meals, nutrition standards for competitive and other foods and beverages, physical education and other school-based activities, school employee wellness and implementation and evaluation and communication. So those are all of the proposed. So those are all of the components of the assessment. We just gauge and report to you annually on how we are doing in those areas. And I'm happy to answer any questions I can about this report.
Does anyone have any questions from the board of the packet? Okay. Thank you very much. And you're up again with your financial report.
So refer back to your board packet. We have our monthly financial report. It includes just kind of some highlights of what's going on in the business office, as well as some workers' compensation, just some high-level counts on reports that have been dealt with in the district and how we're tracking those. Also, the student incident reports. And then if those numbers change due to some differences is how we report the information. But it looks like it's starting to level up. Also, our vehicle accidents included in the financial reports is our cash flow statement part one, which reflects our current spending against prior year spending and our current new budget. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about these reports.
Any questions for Michelle?
Okay, so we are I M G policies for first reading. We are starting the policy JHC, student health services and requirements. We do have public comment on that policy. So should we go first and follow through the changes or?
Phil, how do we typically do that? Do you hear the changes first or hear the comments?
I think you hear the changes first.
All right, thank you. So it was requested by the board in December that we bring back for considerations changes to policy JHC, and that's the student health services and requirements policy. So I had made the changes that were requested based on the work session that we've had a couple of weeks ago. And I'm going to read the major changes that took place and the suggestions that were made. So at this point, it is the second paragraph on the bottom of the policy. And the proposed language that came out of that work session was, "School-based health clinics will provide all health services according to Oregon laws and the most current version of Oregon School Board Health Center standards for certification." So that would be the change. And the, you have in front of you there, if the language that would be struck out, that was the previous language there. So that is, that is what's being brought forward. There have been no additional comments regarding language or changes to that language since our last work session. So this is what is being brought forward and be put on 30-day review of this meeting.
So any questions for Mike? Okay, and we'll go into our public comments since we have a lot of focus, we want to speak about this policy. So I have a statement that we read in the beginning of public comment time, so we'll just, we'll start with that. Public participation in board meetings is governed by policy BDDH. Visitors who wish to speak before board, either as individuals or as members of a group, must complete an intent to speak card, which are available on the back table, and provide it to the board secretary. If you haven't done that, you are welcome to do so now. Comments concerning a published agenda item are limited to its designated place on the agenda unless otherwise authorized by the board chair. Comments about non-agenda items will be heard during audience time at the beginning of the regular session. Any person who is invited by board chair to speak should state their name and if speaking for an organization, the name of the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with common purpose. An individual who has submitted an intent to speak card and has been invited to speak by the board chair will be allowed three minutes. A person speaking on behalf of a group will be allowed five minutes. The board requests that a public comment add information or perspective that has not already been mentioned previously. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Combinations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the board's consideration and disposition of legitimate complaints involving individuals include policy board KL, KLD, public complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in the executive session. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and appreciates the input of community members. So what we'll do is we'll, we're going to start with April Davis, so you can kind of get collected. And then I'll, between each person, let folks know who's going to be next, just so people can get prepared. After Ms. Davis, we will have Lynn Jacobs. And you can come up to the podium. There's a timer there that will be coming down for you, and I'll also give you a beat at about 30 seconds as a word. Okay. Thank you very much. Ready when you are.
So I'd like to recognize the pack for all the hard work that they did to get parents involved, and parents are a key to a child's education. They make the most impact on that child. And that brings me to the School-Based Health Center. The School-Based Health Center basically takes parents out of the picture of their health care for their children. I don't think that's what the school district or the school board wants for our children. By following Oregon law and allowing children to access health care without parental notification, parental permission, I think is contrary, is the wrong message for the local school district to send. I want to refer to the standards for certification for the School-Based Health Centers. And I wanted to bring to your attention the eligibility for services minimum requirements, and specifically item B. It says, "Students of any age may consent for reproductive health and family planning services and for diagnosis and treatment of STIs. If needed, services are not available on-site due to local policy restrictions, appropriate referral is required." The way I read that, that any child in the school district, no matter what their age, can go in for reproductive health and family planning services. I don't think that's the message that we want to send to our community. And I'll just leave that with you. And I want to also add, in the Tribune, there were some, an article by Monty Akers, which was a former board member, remember, and then comments, so I'll leave that for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll be hearing Lynn Jacobs speak next, and after that, we will invite Nancy Hirsch to speak. Ready when you are.
Hello, my name is Lynn Jacobs, and I'm here representing United Unidos. Thank you, board, for hearing from us and for taking up this issue again, which is how many of us came to become involved in getting many of you where you are today. The American College of Gynecology says all women should have unhindered access to all USDA-approved contraceptives. Access means ability to obtain without barrier information and prescriptions for contraception. That is what Oregon law states. That is what was just presented. And in the School-Based Health Center, we should provide access to those methods that are sanctioned by our state. Asking a young person to board a bus, to hitch a ride, to walk several miles, to get to a health center, to obtain a prescription for oral contraceptives, or to have long-acting LARQ placed, is an undue barrier. And when those services could easily be provided next to the school that they attend. The School-Based Health Center provides much more than contraceptive access. We provide, or they provide, mental health services, well-tried checkups, school physicals, vaccines, urgent illness-based visits. What we want to do is provide access to a state-sanctioned contraceptive that the state has decided is able to be provided. Teen pregnancy leads to higher dropout rates. Thirty percent of teenagers who drop out state pregnancy or parenthood as the reason, and this goes up to 36% for Latinas and 38% for African Americans. Fifty percent of teen moms don't graduate. We're invested in getting kids through school and getting them to graduate and go forward with many of the programs that I've heard mentioned tonight, and I applaud those. In just looking into the statistics from 2014 through 2016, zip codes 97123 had the highest number of pregnancies in Washington County. That's where we sit today. So we have an opportunity to break down barriers, to follow Oregon law, and to reduce teen pregnancy. And I encourage you to move forward with the changes that you announced today. Thank you so much.
So we'll be next hearing Nancy Hirsch, and after that, Ingrid Solares will be next.
I'm Nancy Hirsch, and I'm a concerned resident. Here we are again. We packed the, we packed, we were packed with parents who are opposed to this. And here we are again. Last time, there was a board member who said, and she's here again tonight, who said, "I'm taking the moral high ground in regards to preventing abortions." She, she said, "I'm a church-going Christian," didn't you? Yes, and a Christian is someone who follows Christ every day, not just on Sunday. The word Christian, Christ, Christ comes from Christian, would never, Jesus Christ would never come among us and say, "Hey," using the biblical term. I know all you teenagers out there, you're going to fornicate, so here, I'm going to throw you some IUDs and insert those, and some hormones and drugs, which science matters and has proven that is very risky as far as cancer and other problems go. Let's see, okay, so let's go to the legal ramifications. So you knew board members, these were drafted by my attorney. I'm sure that the other two board members have evaluated the legal consequences of any and all potential risks of the medical practices provided at the clinic. And I'm sure they've had plenty of time to get a risk assessment done from the clinic around any and all the services, and they probably provided you with that risk assessment, which should also be provided to the public. So science matters. There's extreme risks. It's only going to be a matter of time if this goes through when a young woman who has a pre-existing risk for, say, blood clots dies, and there was no parental warning, no parental knowledge or consent. So are you going to be able to sleep at night knowing that a child died because of your recklessness and just irresponsibility? We all know that when medicine is practiced, and that's why they call it a medical practice, there are always risks, mistakes happen. With that in mind, why are you, each one of you, willing to assume the medical and legal risks involved around the safety of our children and the Hillsborough High School District students while they are on our campuses and under your care? It's really sad that we have to do this again.
So Ingrid Solares will be next, and then Lynn Harris will speak after.
Hi, Dave. Thank you, everybody, for being here. I just wanted to remind everybody that the School-Based Health Center is a primary care facility, so there are doctors, I think there's like a PA there, just a reference to, I'm not really going to say. Hi, my name is Ingrid Solares, and I'm here representing United Unidos. We're an activist group based out of Hillsborough, and I'd like to ask if anybody else representing United Unidos to please stand up in solidarity. We're here to speak up in support of birth control access at the School-Based Health Center and to defend women's reproductive rights. I wanted to start by reading the ORS 109.610 on family planning, sexual and reproductive health, which states minors of any age are allowed to access birth control-related information and services as well as testing and treatment for sexually transmitted infections, including HIV, without parental consent. There's also ORS 109.640, which states that minors who are 15 years or older are able to consent to medical and dental services without parental consent. It seems to me that the real issue here is not with School-Based Health Center providing birth control, but with Oregon-friendly statutes in the federal HIPAA laws, which are put in place to protect patient confidentiality. Virginia University of Ohio Health Centers, including their School-Based Health Centers, must follow federal regulations regarding confidentiality. As a former teenage mother and a clinical social worker, I trained in adolescent and family therapy, and I would like to tell anybody who has concerns about birth control being available at the School-Based Health Center, I encourage you to foster open communication with your kids so they feel comfortable coming to you with these tough life choices. There's no doubt that parents should be aware that their teens are engaging in sexual intercourse, and they are interested in birth control. You should be the first person that your kids reach out to in these situations. But unfortunately, not every parenting relationship has open communication. After all, these can be very difficult topics to approach. When this is the case, and if teens decide they don't want to become parents before they're ready, then having easy access to birth control reduces teen pregnancy rates and ensures that young women can continue to pursue their academic, sorry, it ensures that young women can continue their academic pursuits and live their high school years with something less to worry about. Thanks.
We'll hear from Lynn Harris next, and then after that, Sheri Anderson.
My name's Lynn Harris. I'm just representing myself and my family. Having fought this fight once before, it's hard to believe this is two years ago, I was always struck by the words there on the back wall. "Engage and challenge all learners to ensure academic excellence." And to me, academic excellence is indeed the primary function of the school district. As a parent, now a grandparent, as a teacher and retired, my concern is that the school district concentrate on teaching the three Rs and to continue to help families to raise decent, moral, well-behaved, and patriotic citizens. Well-educated, moral, and patriotic citizens are the ones who will contribute to the co-activity and the stability of our society. It is wrong for the school district to do anything to undermine those goals. In fact, three institutions in a student's life should be on the same page. The family, the church, and the school are all pillars of support and need to be united. Due to the entertainment industry and social media, parents are having enough problems raising their children, especially teenagers who are subject to mixed messages and raging hormones. Parents do not need the school to undermine what they are trying to teach. No one wants young girls to become pregnant, but really, do adults want girls to be promiscuous? We take intercourse so casually. They are going to do it anyways, not an excuse for making contraceptives and abortive patients available at school. And I really don't know how much of the Oregon state is going to come after the school district. Maybe we should not have any health clinics, and then we wouldn't have anything to worry about. Another goal of the school district is communication and parents engaging them. But these birth control devices and medications may be given without parent approval, only makes the situation worse. And aspirin must have a parent okay, but an abortion not so. Allowing a school health facility to be taken over by the Virginia Garcia Clinic, which is now being funded by Planned Parenthood, is simply wrong. The bottom line for Planned Parenthood is money. The more promiscuous, the more pregnancies, the more abortions, the more broken hearts and traumatized lives. Those health clinics are just in levers. Good for the school district in Tyger, in Chualatin.
She's resident.
Come on, Hillsborough, stand up for what is right and get back to academic excellence.
Sheri Anderson next, and after that, Laura Porter. Sheri Anderson next, and after that, Lori Porter.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Anderson. I'm a parent in the district. I have two teenage daughters, one of which graduated Lenko High School last year, and another of which is a 15-year-old at Lenko this year. I wanna say before I, just wanna add, that I respect other people's religious beliefs, but I do not want other people's religious beliefs and ideology making health and love well-care decisions for my daughters. School-based health centers must emphasize that comprehensive care is quality care. These clinics' role as healthcare providers means that they must provide a full range of services and match the community and state and federal standard of care. Failing to provide contraceptive services reduces the quality of these clinics' care. I don't want my daughters to be sexually active in middle school or high school, and I believe I have a good relationship with them and an open relationship with them, but if they decide on their own to make a different choice, I wanna make sure that they are safe and healthy, and that they have somewhere to go. I believe we have an obligation to all of these students in our district to provide the same. The Oregon Department of Education, the Sex Ed Guidelines include information regarding the efficacy of contraceptions in preventing HIV/STDs and unwanted pregnancies, including accessing contraceptive prevention methods, resources, community surfaces, et cetera, and also review of the HIV/STI symptoms, effects. I believe our district follows these guidelines, so it is incumbent upon us to provide access for the prevention of deep disease and pregnancy that we discuss with them through this curriculum. I wanna also say that I researched, the 2017 Oregon Healthy Teen Survey states that in Washington County, 50% of respondents had sex for the first time when they were 13-years-old. So, again, it's incumbent upon us to deal with the reality of the situation, protect the kids that are impacted by pregnancies, of course, which are girl, children, girl students. Thank you.
So we'll hear from Lori Porter now, and then after that, Jan Marie Ellison.
It'll be five minutes, and I'll represent my board. I've heard a lot of words tonight about, oh, excuse me, I'll introduce myself. I'm Lori Porter, Lori Eishen Porter, from Parents Rights and Education. It's a statewide organization, as well as, we work with some national groups as well to stand with parents and guardians who need some assistance regarding their rights. So I've heard a lot of language today about trust and accountability, and getting the advice from parents, supporting parents, having better communication. And language matters. I'll pause there for a second and just say, Oregon law is, districts have local control in Oregon. You are not obligated to have a school-based health center, you're not obligated to distribute contraceptives. Yes, Oregon clinics have to provide students of any age reproductive services. School districts do not. And my, I'm representing parents and guardians who, aside what happens off-school property, this is on-school property, and the onus is on you and your vote and your decision. So districts have that right. We do not have to provide contraceptives to students on-school grounds. So, there's concern in the policy about the language about not allowing contraceptives. There's concerns from parents and guardians about language as well. Who decides what's good health practices? Who decides what is appropriate? Who decides what public agencies get access to my child, my son or daughter? Who decides what's appropriate? There is, within this policy, it's referencing invasive physical exams, and I would like to read them, read what that means. And in the policy, it also says, if contraceptives are allowed, and I'm not gonna go into all the detail about what each and every one of those entails, but it's all contraceptives for minors whatever age, okay? And I've been drilling down on this subject for years. The term invasive physical exam, if you have a school-based health center, parents, guardians, you don't know who is going to be having access to your child. Defined by law as means any medical, excuse me, means any medical examination that involves the exposure of private body parts, I'm gonna give this girl a name, Jessica, exposure to Jessica's private body parts, or any act during such examination that includes inserting something, incisions, injecting something into Jessica's body, but of course, it does not include hearing, vision, or scoliosis training. That's not very comforting to a parent, that invasive physical exams that could include incision, insertion, prescription, oral prescription into a minor child's body. The parents are the ultimate, ultimate guide for their children, to direct the education and the healthcare of their child. You talked about your child being safe and making decisions for your child about contraceptives. Good for you, that is your choice. But for parents and guardians who may have different cultural values, customs, beliefs, the fact that somebody could be touching their son or daughter and making healthcare decisions is very concerning, and that ultimately, it's not a state law issue, it's ultimately on you and the decision that you make tonight, or, excuse me, in the next month or two. Thank you.
So we'll be hearing from Jan Marie Ellison, and then Elizabeth Christiansen.
My name is Jan Marie Ellison, and I'm a parent in the district. So, as with others, I'm kind of caught in this, we've done this before, right? We've discussed this exact issue before, and what level of care our school district should be responsible for. I urge the board to consider that you are part of a school board, you are not a medical facility board. You should be working on educating our children, not providing medical care for them. I still feel that way, I felt that way before, I feel it now. As an owner of the property that the School-Based Health Center is located on, we are seen as the proprietor of what happens there, and are therefore liable for any lawsuits brought against the SBHC. This is a large risk to take when school funds are already stretched, so far as to keep classes at an astronomical 35 to 1 headcount for teachers, but yet, this is more funds that could go. Aside from this issue, you are looking at introducing the opportunity for children of all ages, and they've talked tonight in the School-Based Health Center Standards of Certification, it says, under eligibility for services, number requirements, to be allowed to receive all types, that is the word we used, all types of health services, including contraceptives, all types of contraceptives, including those that are surgically inserted into the body. You have said that getting contraceptives will decrease the number of abortions and unwanted pregnancies for school-aged kids within our district, but will it actually increase the overall health of these children? It has been shown in recent studies conducted by researchers in the University of Copenhagen, they collected data from 1.8 million Danish women between the ages of 15 to 50, who had been taking some form of hormonal contraceptive, whether oral implant IUDs, vaginal ring, the risk of getting breast cancer was comparatively increased. They said the risk depends on the amount of time they've been taking the contraceptive. If it's less than a year, then the increase is roughly 9%. Let me go back for a second. Current risk is 12% of women will get breast cancer in the course of their life. So if you're, you know, after one year, that risk can increase 9%. For more than a decade, if they're taking it for more than a decade, it can increase 38%. Do these girls need to...
No.
And to understand this risk, starting so young, there are so many different things. On the Planned Parenthood site, there are 18 different forms, which include the IUDs and all these other things, but also include vasectomy, to, like, laryovation, whatever that word is. Multiple things are listed in this. You are saying "all" when you say this.
Thank you, right?
I don't agree, and I want you to make a better choice.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Christiansen will be here from next, and after that, Amanda Adzima.
I'm Elizabeth Christiansen, I'm a parent in the district. I have three points. Point is, this issue has already been discussed twice. Once, when the School-Based Health Center was given its original contract and set up, and again, just over a year ago in 2016. Many, several of you heard those things, lacking a compelling reason why are we visiting this again? And just because you, the representatives of the public, do not agree with the vote, doesn't mean it's compelling reason to try again. Second, schools are not doctors, you don't employ doctors. You are educators. We should not be in the healthcare business at all. But, once we allow the School-Based Health Center to be on our grounds, we assume the responsibility for what goes on there. That puts yourself in a position where you can't just ignore what's happening. You have to make a place for it is a safe place for every student, and that oversight has to be managed responsibly. The proposed changes that you have give total autonomy to the doctors and the people running the School-Based Health Center. They are not responsible oversight from you. State law does say that women have to have access to birth control. It does not say they have access through the schools. The state law also says there are HIPAA confidentiality laws, but those laws are in direct conflict with more stated goals for parent involvement, and as the school, you have to look after your goals first. Third, when it gets down to the actual contraceptives, your job is to be educators, again, not doctors. Do what the schools are supposed to be doing. Look at what you already have in place, the after-school programs, the education that is in your health classes. Look at the parent advisory committee that spoke to you earlier this evening, trying to get more parent involvement, not less. There was a person who spoke to you, who said if their daughters decided to do something different than what she taught them, she would want to make sure that they were safe. That is parent involvement. That is what this School-Based Health Center is trying to avoid. Thank you.
So we want to hear from Amanda Adzima, and then Luna Arshad.
Hi, I'm Amanda Adzima. I'm 14, I'm a freshman at Villar High School, and I wasn't gonna speak today, but I wasn't hearing the voice of those who would be most affected by this ruling, which is the students, the people who will be using the School-Based Health Center. I wanna speak up for the rights, the reproductive rights, and the autonomy that these sort of situations will provide these students. I'm friends with students who have kids of their own, and students who are fornicating, and this, this topic is very near and dear to my heart, and I feel like it's important to talk about it, and I feel like it's important for students to have that ability, to have it near, close to them, to be able to go visit it after school, if that's what they need, because being sexually active as a teen is a choice. It's not a choice that I've, I've made or I plan to make, but it's one that friends of mine have made, and even if I don't 100% support it, it's important that they can be safe, that they can be protected in a ways, and that they can get the help they need, even if their parents wouldn't support them through it, even if they don't think they'd find the support in their community. They need the ability to be able to be anonymous, be able to get the help they need, and it's most important for the younger students. Now, they've been talking about, I've heard people talk about, people, it's like, they make sure that it's mentioned that it's every age can do this, but it's important to know that it's not your second grader that's going to be out there getting these helps. It could be your middle schooler, it's probably gonna be your high schooler, your junior, your senior, maybe even your sophomore, that's going to be getting out here, and just talk to your kids if you're worried about stuff like this, make it clear that you won't hate them, and that they can come to you with stuff like this, or they won't. But it's important to know that even if they won't, that they'll be safe. We had a mom up here earlier who's talking about how she wants her daughters to be safe no matter what, even if she makes a decision that they won't, she will be thrilled with. So, it's just, it's important to hear the voice of the children, talk to your students, talk to your kids, talk to the people in your life that this will affect, and please take us into consideration when we vote.
We'll go from here from Luna Arshad now, and that's our next person.
Hi, my name's Luna Arshad. I'm a senior at Lurie High School. A sexually active teenager who doesn't use contraceptives has a 90% chance of becoming pregnant in the first year. Personally, I know five teen mothers, and one of those has returned back to school. Having access to contraceptives not only prevents teenage pregnancy, but prevents STIs as well. For some reasons, the School Health Center may be the only place where they can receive these contraceptives, and, and education on sex. And personally, I feel disrespected as being labeled as a teen with raging hormones, and as a woman who can't make decisions for herself. I think it's really important, again, re-stating what you said, like, it's really important for you to take us into consideration when you make your decisions.
Actually, not our last one, I guess we have one more. And I'm gonna say that, this video's on the audience, which is to speak, please turn your card in now, I'm not gonna continue to extend the evening beyond this point, so you can grab a card on the back table and turn it to back, if you would like to choose it. Okay? So Drew Cummins is our last speaker of the evening. Okay? Yes?
Thank you, board. Thank you, board. I also wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I wanted to speak on behalf of the Hillsborough Legislative Delegation. We submitted a letter of support for this policy on behalf of Senator Riley, Representative Susan McLean, and Representative Janine Solman, and I wanna read that letter today. Dear Chair Allen, Vice Chair Schrelchen, and members of the Hillsborough School Board, as state legislators representing this district, we are ready to express our support for the current proposal to allow students to consult with responsible healthcare providers and access contraception at school-based health centers in the Hillsborough School District. The teen pregnancy rate in Oregon has plummeted from 105 per 1,000 women aged 15 to 19 in 1988 to just 36 in 2013. to just 36 in 2013. We should celebrate this trend, even as we acknowledge the startling fact that teen pregnancy rate in Oregon and the United States is still much higher than most of the industrialized world. We must also address the significant racial and economic disparities to ensure all young people have the information and resources they need to delay sexual activity until ready to prevent disease and to prevent unintended pregnancy. All young people deserve the healthcare they need to stay healthy, and school-based health centers are a critical healthcare access point for young people in Oregon. Prescribing and dispensing contraceptions or contraceptives reduces STD frequency, pregnancy, and the cost of medical treatment. Likewise, a policy that removes barriers to accessing birth control will promote the educational achievement of all students, but particularly young women. Please stand up for the young women seeking to consult with a responsible healthcare provider about their health at their school-based health center. We ask you to support this policy and the health and safety of our students. Thank you for your consideration and service to our community.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We're going to move forward with our agenda. If you came to speak, you're welcome to stay. But also, you don't get offended when people get offended, so don't go up with it if you're not interested in the remainder of the meeting. So we'll go to Policy FF, naming facilities, with Adam and Lisa.
As we begin our bond process and we're going to build new tools, in time to revisit policies FF around naming of facilities. And you'll notice that we've included a couple of changes that I think better defines how we go about this process of naming of facilities. The first is, we've included a sentence that talks about the naming of facilities after persons that those persons be living, have been deceased less than 20, 20 years, will not be considered. So basically, we're saying we don't, we don't think it's appropriate to name a building after somebody who is still living or has just recently passed away. The intent is, we want to make sure that, given enough time, that this person really is somebody that is worthy of having a school named after. We know that we've seen situations in, not necessarily in our district, but of a building being named for a recently deceased principal or staff member, and within a few years, a generation maybe, nobody knows who that person is or why that building was named as it was. So that's the idea behind that. The next paragraph about naming portions of existing facilities really recognizes the fact that we do have some of our buildings that have classrooms, gymnasiums, stadiums, named after individuals, and this just memorializes that process and makes it an org, exercise as opposed to individual building. So happy to answer questions, take comments. That's the rationale behind this change.
Is this something that we're considering, like Fred Meyer Field at Century High School or something like that? Like, you mentioned a person. Are we open to the idea of corporate sponsorship or something like that? The idea of naming a specific gymnasium or field sort of feels like professional athletics.
We have, we've had a conversation with the board in the past about actually the corporate name of facilities. The board hasn't actually taken that step yet. Casey, you want to weigh in on that?
No, I just echo what Adam said, but also, we have existing facilities in our district that were named after people that worked here for a long time. There are many that are still alive and maybe working for other districts or other roles once they left us. So I think making sure that the criteria and the process for doing that is more than just an individual building or athletic complex, for example, receiving the name of something significant without having a more extensive process.
I'd like to jump in, Adam.
Just on the sponsorship question that you asked, that is something we've explored, and, and we would want this policy to allow for that. We've had opportunities in the past to explore some corporate sponsorships, and some of those have worked out, others have not, but that is something that we're interested in. If we had, if we had the organization come forward and wanted to donate significant dollars, we would want to be able to entertain that and bring that forward to the board.
Erica. I just had a question about, there's no language in here in regards to renaming. So if there was an incident where something was named, is there anything that we could, what would we do in that case?
I'm sorry, I was, I'm sorry.
Renaming, yeah, if there's any language that we, that speaks to that, if something were to happen, or maybe from OSBA, if they have any policies or language that talks about that.
I haven't seen anything. It's been, if you follow the news, especially down south, there's been occasion for schools and other public facilities to be renamed because it was the, the name that it was given was not incorporated anymore. So I think it would be a similar process, it would be a board, a board process for renaming a facility.
Cam, and then one.
So for those places that, before we had this policy in place, that have lots of different names in their buildings, will we grandfather those in, or, or will those, or are you implying they may come down?
Well, I'm not interested in.
Grandfathering them in.
That would be my, yeah.
This is moving forward.
Perfect, thank you. It's a question I will get.
So to Erica's, Erica's point, though, this policy doesn't address renaming. We don't, does anybody know we have, if we have a policy regarding renaming, or if something happens, is that something we'd have to address? Like, we'd have to create this policy?
I'm not seeing a policy that discusses renaming. I think we could use this policy.
And that's something we would. I can see us using this policy to, to do that. Casey, did you have something to add?
I was just going to echo that. I, I think if that were the case, if, if a group of people or somebody brought concern about the existing name of something, I think we'd want to use this policy and bring it to a larger group for discussion before we just leave it up to an individual school or department, for example, to make that decision.
Do we have any interest in adding more in the sentence? Whenever we do that, it makes it more difficult to go through policy updates, just to preface that. But we can't want a sentence that, you know, with the event of the facility needing to be renamed, this policy will be followed, or we just want to have that happen? I see yes and no, so Jackie, yes, no? Sorry, start with you.
You didn't start with me. I'm getting, I'm getting used to it. Probably wouldn't be a bad idea as a, just in case.
Okay, Dan says no. Erica.
Yeah, I think it would just be nice to have even just a sentence that this policy will also.
I'd prefer to just leave the policy as it is and check with OSB if there's guidelines on renaming facilities. Make that one consider.
We'll move back to you after. Okay.
Yeah, no, let's not overcomplicate things.
Can we, instead of adding a sentence, can we say naming and/or renaming facilities as part of the policy? Or is that part of the policy? I mean, is that, I don't know, that might make it easier.
Could I, could I, are we talking about renaming a facility because the existing name is inappropriate? Or are we just talking about, we want to change the name of it?
I think you were inappropriate, I think that's what people are getting at. It's not, right.
Do you have a school named after Harvey Weinstein? Would you want to change the name right now?
But I think you could, if it's all.
Okay, so it sounds like mostly no, so, okay. All right. Any other questions or comments for Adam? All right, we are on the move with DDD and DDC.
Good evening, long day. Allow me to introduce policies DDD, Native American Impact Age Fund, and policy DTC, Native American Education Program. The first policy basically allows us to recruit and identify students living in Native American lands. And the second policy allows us to seek grants, funding to provide culturally relevant programs and activities within the district. We have those policies in your packets, and if you have any questions to make, and we're willing to have to respond to those.
Do you want to have any questions or comments for both of us about these policies?
Sure.
We don't see any.
Then from the first one.
Oh, no, now we need to, okay, so.
I don't feel like adopted previously in references, so these are being introduced as new? This is not revision of previous policies?
Correct. Those are new policies, and you have, perhaps you have previously had policies.
Do you not please follow the OSB agenda?
Yes, thank you. As a matter of fact, one of the reasons why you have the language Indian students there is because the federal government has not yet come back, replaced that with the Native American students. And so that's something that we're willing to tackle at the federal level, since it is the federal brand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we are, Michelle and Beth, policies GBI.
So this policy is pretty straightforward. I'm sorry, we need to get the camera back on you, do double duty here. Okay, so GBI, Gibson Solicitations, it's really one of our ethics policies and kind of seeks to outline the fact that employees are not allowed to accept things of material value from folks whose really only interaction with them is through the course of being their student or being their subordinate, or somebody who's potentially trying to influence their decision on something as a, as a salesperson or something like that. It does not, of course, mean that nobody in your family, just by virtue of the fact that you're now a public employee, can ever give you a gift over $50. So that's not what it's intending to, to speak to. It's really about other folks whose only connection with you is by virtue of the fact that you are a public employee. So just trying to, to make sure that, that those ethics boundaries are, are kept in place. And the, the second paragraph, I know, can be a little bit, people can have different feelings about that. Like, are people disallowed from giving their teachers gifts and things like that? And really, we, we talked about this as a staff, and it's, it should not be encouraged to give gifts. It's not that somebody who, who gives a very heartfelt gift to their teacher, it's not necessarily going to be turned away unless it, again, is something that, that is of material value over $50. But in the interest of, of equity and keeping all of our students in mind and their abilities to do such things, it would be better to encourage the giving, the writing of notes of appreciation and things like that, as opposed to giving purchased gifts. So, so kind of that's what the beginning of the policy is, is addressing. And then later down in the policy, it talks about the solicitation of funds in the name of the school and how that's not to be done without prior approval from your principal or from, from the district to do so.
Other questions about this? Martin?
I bet the, the term sunshine fund is in quotes, since I must admit my ignorance and I have to tell you, what are we really getting at there?
Like, if somebody's really ill or experiencing a loss in their family, a colleague is, is going through a rough time, that's kind of the historical use of that term. To me, it seems a little outdated as well, but I asked, and they say that people still use the term, so.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Beth. Before we move on to the consent agenda, we're going to take a quick pause for Mike to dig a room.
Yeah, thank you. So this is a board, Board Recognition Month, and someone just walked in, Rob Roward, that is super famous. He's been, he's been with the district 32 years, and he and his student, he commissioned his students and worked with his students to create a project for, for the board that we want to share with you. But prior to do that, I want to embarrass Rob a little bit. He is, he has been in the district a long time, and you heard Brooke and Travis today talking about CTE and some of the new programs that are coming forth and the expansion of CTE projects over the last couple of years. I, I kind of think of Rob as the grandfather of CTE in, in our school district. He is a guy that has been involved with the welding program and metals program for years and years and years, and has placed hundreds of kids in either higher-end programs or directly into jobs that pay super well. If you talk to anybody in the industry, they know Rob and they appreciate his efforts to get kids into the workforce and to have them well-prepared when they enter the workforce. He's a guy that has been at Glencoe for a heck of a long time. He's been, he's seen a lot of principals come and go. And, and with that, he's, he's remained focused on opportunities and opening doors for students. So I just wanted the opportunity to thank Rob for all of his years of service and the difference that you've made for our students, as well as the local community group that you have been attached to for so many years. Rob would also want me to mention that Mike O'Connor also worked to help produce this project, and he did some of that work as well. If you ever have the chance, sit down and talk to Rob about his interview years and years ago, how he got the job and how that interview took place in an airplane. And, and not your typical jet, this is like a two-seater, and there was a lot of fear involved. So just some big day at the time that we're in. So Rob, could you just stand up and maybe explain what this project is, what you went through with the students, and I'll hand them out?
Yeah, this was a joint project with our welding students and our woodworking students. And so I was contacted to make some board appreciation gifts. And so we, I said to the kids, I just told a couple of my students, I said, all right, you're designing it, you're doing it. And they did it, and so we're, these are plaques, but they have each of your names on them.
It's just the una we were hoping.
Very gorgeous.
Very good. Hold yours up so I can zoom in a little.
Hey, Rob, cover ready about the cool machine that does the normal work.
Well, these are, those are both CNC, a CNC wood router and a CNC plasma cutter. So the students design stuff on them, and they can do whatever they like to do. And in fact, I've got to keep an eye on some of them because there's copyright infringements, and they, you know, they want to make trailblazer signs and all this stuff. Now, you can make one and keep it, but you can't sell them. You all have proprietary things for those items.
Thank you, Rob.
Since it is Board Appreciation Month. And now that you have super cool things, you guys want to come around and get a group shot? And we can invite Rob.
I've got my Glencoe swag on now. There you go. Looking good.
Just watch your feet.
Oh, my God. Yeah.
A little tighter. There we go. Beautiful, one, two, three. One more, one, two. Oh, four, thank you.
Thank you. You have to ask for caution here, that airplane story. Thank you, sir.
going to have a request to amend that, so let's do that first.
I would like to request that we, that lead school policy CBT, also consent agenda, that agenda to be considered individually.
Which policy?
CBT. It's under three. There's two policies.
Do you want CBA and CBT, or just CBT? Because they're grouped together right now.
I guess grouped together, because the form will have to be shared.
Okay.
And that's the superintendent evaluation.
Okay. So you requested that you pulled up the consent agenda, and now you can request to discuss the item.
I want to request to discuss the item.
Okay, let's discuss it.
I just wanted to add one more responsibility on there, which is engagement and outreach, and have an opportunity to speak to that and the evaluation, because of all the copy chats and all the facilitation that I presented. So we want to have an opportunity to highlight that, so just adding in there.
So we ran the beginning of these policies on page 210 in the packet. You're welcome. It goes, where Erica's talking, but it's a little bit lower, but that's the beginning. Would it be one of the numbers in the first policy?
Yeah, I have an idea on that, if you, that would be helpful.
Okay, please, yeah.
So on page 213 is where the numbers kind of end there. And I would just suggest maybe we add a number 17, and it could say something along the lines of engage with school stakeholders, including students, staff, parents, and community members, to gather input, share information, and build understanding.
That's exactly what I was saying.
You can send those.
Well, sorry. Well, I'm sorry. Kim?
Just point of clarification, can we, since it's been pulled off the agenda, can we, do we vote to amend it and then put it back in the consent agenda? Or does it get pulled and get brought back next time?
We can amend. We can amend the vote.
We can amend the vote, but I think we vote on it separately. At least, that's what I'm directions, that's the thing I have directions for. So that's my board's group. So we would add item 17. Would that somehow be reflected in our performance standards, or, I mean, kind of where we need it, but?
Yeah, so the next policy that Erica mentioned initially, that just hasn't been updated in a while, and the standards that we have that I typically evaluate on includes the opportunity to weigh in regarding engagement and that kind of thing. The OSBA is suggesting that we don't need those standards in the policy, because those standards can change over time, or on the board, or depending on what the circumstances of the district are. And so we would pull those standards out. Current evaluation system would give an opportunity to weigh in on that. And I think if we added that bullet to the first policy, we'd be in good shape all the way around.
So then, is there any discussion about adding that item number 17 at my grand? Comments or questions? Any feedback?
I think it's a great idea.
Perfect. So then what I'm looking for now is a motion to vote on policy CBA as amended, and CBT, and CBGAR, which is all of item 3F. And we can vote on that first, and then we'll return to the consent agenda. Would we be able to take it off of the agenda? No. I need a motion to vote on it separately, is what we need.
I think we did that with the.
Well, she requested to weigh in the motion part, yeah. It's a separate direction for that first, isn't it? Yeah, so I need a motion to vote on the item separately.
I move that we vote on item 10F3 separately from the consent agenda.
Okay, so it has been moved by Martin and seconded by Mark to vote on 10F3, policy CBA, CBT, and CBGAR separately. So if you would like to vote on 10F3 separately, as moved by Martin and seconded by Mark, please say aye.
Aye.
If you don't, please say no. Okay, so we'll now vote on that separately.
I move that we adopt the modified language that Mike gave to Val for section F3.
Okay, so I think that we want to move to approve policy CBA as amended, and policy CBT and CBGAR. Is that in motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Has been moved by Mark and seconded by Jackie to approve policy CBA as amended, and policy CBT and CBGAR. Is there any discussion? Okay, if you would like to approve policy CBA as amended, and policy CBT and CBGAR, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, so that's approved. And now I'm looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move that we approve our consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Erica and seconded by Jackie to approve our consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Kim?
Just super huge kudos to all the teachers that were here who gave us their course proposals. I understand why they're not here tonight, but please, would you share with them that they've prepared a consent agenda, that we were all thrilled to pieces about all this growth?
Yeah, will do. Thank you.
Now, seconded, I was not present for the December 12 meeting. I had other obligations that day, but new course proposals, as everyone might know, are my favorite thing. So I'm really sad that I was not there, and I'm very excited that I get to approve seven on this consent agenda, including some that have Part 20 and 2, so it's really technically more than seven. It's just amazing. And to quote Martin, "Epidly awesome." So I'm really excited about that.
All right, so if you would like to approve our consent agenda, as moved by Erica and seconded by Jackie, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, so that's approved. And now I'm looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move that we approve our consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Erica and seconded by Jackie to approve our consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Kim?
Just super huge kudos to all the teachers that were here who gave us their course proposals. I understand why they're not here tonight, but please, would you share with them that they've prepared a consent agenda, that we were all thrilled to pieces about all this growth?
Yeah, will do. Thank you.
Now, seconded, I was not present for the December 12 meeting. I had other obligations that day, but new course proposals, as everyone might know, are my favorite thing. So I'm really sad that I was not there, and I'm very excited that I get to approve seven on this consent agenda, including some that have Part 20 and 2, so it's really technically more than seven. It's just amazing. And to quote Martin, "Epidly awesome." So I'm really excited about that.
All right, so if you would like to approve our consent agenda, as moved by Erica and seconded by Jackie, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. The consent agenda is approved. Okay, let's go to our action items with Adam. We are at item A, we're contract for CMGC Services for Rebuild.
So back to November, the board approved us using the CMGC construction method for rebuild. And earlier this month, we interviewed three different firms for that project, and I'm happy to bring you Inline Construction. That is the firm that our interview team unanimously selected. Erica was a part of that. Inline Construction is a local firm. Their offices are about a mile from Rebuild Elementary School. They have deep roots in our community. And in fact, during the interview, the owner of the company produced his report card from Rebuild Elementary School. Wow, I don't know if you can tell us when he was there, but it was a while ago. So we're really excited to have him on board. I think it's just, the fact that they're embedded in that community as they are, is going to give us just that extra level of concern and dedication to that project, that we're just really excited about how that's going to turn out. So I'm happy to recommend Inline Construction for that project, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Eric, am I on it?
Any questions for Adam before we vote?
Did you consider the grades on the report card as far as you wouldn't show us? We can just see the rebuilding.
Okay, so we're looking now for a motion to award the contract for the CMGC Services for Rebuild Elementary School to Inline Construction.
I move that we award the contract for Construction Management General Contractor Services for Rebuild Elementary School renovations to Inline Construction.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Erica and seconded by Kim to award the contract for Construction Management General Contractor Services for Rebuild Elementary School renovations to Inline Construction. Is there any discussion? Or questions? Okay, so we will be voting on awarding the contract for Construction Management General Contractor Services for Rebuild Elementary School renovations to Inline Construction, as moved by Erica and seconded by Kim. If you would like to award that contract, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. Okay, can I pass this? Thank you. We are now at item B, approve the dedication deed and right-of-way dedication between the city of Hillsborough and Hillsborough School District for Brookwood Elementary School Cedar Street Improvement Project.
This has been a long time coming. We've been talking about this project for over a year now, and we are finally to a point where we're ready to sign the easement. As you will know, if you've been by Brookwood at all, Cedar Street, which runs in front of the school, is being improved, widened, and as part of that project, we need to grant an easement to the city. In exchange for that, we are getting parking, we're getting a flashing crosswalk area. The city's just been a great partner with us. They know the work that's going to be happening at Brookwood, and they're very excited to be a part of the improvements that are going to be happening there. We're also going to be working with them on sewer easement, and they're offering to put in a sewer line that is going to meet our needs in a bioswale. So it's just turning into a great project. It's going to benefit both the city and the school district as we move forward. So I'm happy to recommend that we approve the dedication easement, or the deed, and the right-of-way dedication to the city. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Adam? Okay, so we are looking for a motion, then, to approve the dedication deed and right-of-way.
I move that we approve the dedication deed and right-of-way dedication between the city of Hillsborough and the Hillsborough School District for the Brookwood Elementary School Cedar Street Improvement Project.
Second. It's been moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim to approve the dedication deed and right-of-way dedication between the city of Hillsborough and the Hillsborough School District for the Brookwood Elementary School Cedar Street Improvement Project. Is there any discussion? All right, if you would like to approve the dedication deed and right-of-way dedication between the city of Hillsborough and the Hillsborough School District for the Brookwood Elementary School Cedar Street Improvement Project, as moved by Jackie and seconded by Kim, please say aye.
Aye.
If not, please say no. All right, we are at item 12, our agenda, which is HCU and HEA reports.
I guess I am going first today. So for HCU, I just want a couple things I want to talk about. First up, I'm part of the tech advisory committee for Don Wolf, and it's really heartening to hear that we got a bunch of money for classified computers, and that we're actually thinking, kind of considering, actually talking to staff about what they need, which I think is really awesome, because in years past, it was just more of a, here's, this is what you get, and you're going to like it, and you're going to love it, and it doesn't always work. So I think it's really great that we are, that Hillsborough School District has really built this history of talking to our employees and talking to people about what is best, and what is the best way forward, and really getting input, and really considering it. That also shows up in our reclassification work. I don't know how many of you know Debbie Ashley. She's been working tirelessly with our, with Melanie Hansen, our VP of Bargaining, to really go and talk to our office staff and try to figure out, how can we clean up the dozen different titles for these positions? Because if you go, like, we're getting away from a situation where you have just this one narrow role, and you just do this one job. You're constantly being asked, hey, can you cover for this person? This person is out. And try to really, instead of trying to get a sub, like, use the office staff to cover for each other, to do those, to really make sure that they have a high-quality employee sitting in that attendance office, or sitting in that health room, that knows the policies and procedures, that knows how to do the very necessary things for students just to attend school, instead of having some random sub off the street who doesn't really know the students, doesn't know the policies and procedures. And I think the work we're doing there, which the bargaining team will get their, will be sort of the first thing the bargaining team works on, is reviewing and approving, is, I think, is really going to make a difference for how our staff operate, and the flexibility that our principals will have in the building to make sure that student needs are met when they, the moment they walk in the door, which is really awesome. The last thing I wanted to bring up is the professional development funds. In our contract, we have some language about setting aside some district money to pay for professional development for our staff. Well, good news, bad news? Good news, everybody, the entire fund has been depleted. That means, it's awesome, because people are getting the needed trainings that they need, but it's not so awesome, because we're January, and still got a couple months left in the year, and there are still classes, and trainings, and seminars, and conferences that really relate to an employee's job, and really help them build their skills and be a better employee. So, and what I have told people, to come talk to the union, I can help them craft a message, to go to principals and ask, hey, let me lay out the case of why this is a benefit for our students, and to our class, and to our school, and ask for the use of building funds. But I've really been trying to make sure that people, that people just don't go and blindly ask, because principals have enough to deal with. But I think there's a lot of classes out there, especially for our media assistance. The What's New in Children's Literature is, I think, a really amazing conference, from the feedback I've gotten from media assistance, and traditionally, that is paid through the professional development fund. But I think for those who weren't able to get into there, having some principals open to the idea of sending some staff to those, that conference, or to that class, to really learn what are the new books? Because as much as I love technology, I still think a good book in a student's hand will create a lifelong lover of reading. And if you go to a middle school, they love their books. And, you know, go talk to Ms. Harley at Evergreen, it's every day, there's a line of kids coming in, getting new books, always wanting to see what's new and what's awesome. So things are great. Let's keep continuing, and I look forward to getting into bargaining.
I do, too. That's such a life preserver.
I, Jill Galley, Hillsborough Education Association President, and yes, the association is looking forward to bargaining. Win-win, right? Of course, you know, we did do a survey. We sent out a survey to all of our teachers and members, and it was very well-received. And along with that, we've done this Engage project, where we've been to all the buildings except GLINCO, which will be going to the end of this month, and had an opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with all of the teachers, which is very powerful. And we feel like, you know, we kind of know what they want from us, and along with keeping salary and benefits competitive, in the Portland metro, class size is definitely a concern. It's a concern for the three kindergarten teachers who have 29 students in their classroom, two at Henry and one at Jackson. It's a concern for the middle school teachers who have 42 students in their classroom. It's a concern for the high school teacher, the drama teacher has 50 students in her classroom. You know, I believe the foundation is the most important, so I talk to you often about starting at kindergarten, first grade, and working our way up, because if we can build that strong foundation, we know that third graders, really, that's the key grade where we need to look to see if they're on target to, you know, as far as just reading at grade level and doing math at grade level. And we can really predict how the students are going to be success, their success rate in middle school and high school, if we look at them at third grade. And so that's the telltale grade. So, you know, when I see, and I counted, we have 64 kindergarten classrooms, and 18 of those classrooms have more than 25 students. The national average at Kinder is 21 for the United States, and 54 out of our 64 have more than 21. And so I think it's something that we need to look at as we move forward. Safety's another issue, another concern, and I think that class size does impact the safety. When you get, you know, that magic number, things change in your classrooms. Teachers definitely want manageable class size. They want support with classroom behaviors that disrupt students' learning. They want resources available for all students. Safety's another issue, another concern, and I think that class size does impact the safety. When you get, you know, that magic number, things change in your classrooms. Teachers definitely want manageable class size. They want support with classroom behaviors that disrupt students' learning. They want resources available for all students that are at risk, and they want help with students who are at risk and impact the learning of others, and they want that to help, you know, immediately, within minutes, not, you know, a half hour later or an hour later. And I know that, you know, I'm an optimist, and I believe that we will work together and come up with some great solutions and think outside the box. And I think we're doing a lot of amazing things in this district. It's evident as we listen through this evening and all the up-and-coming classes that are going to be offered to our students, and I believe this district is top-notch. I believe you guys are top-notch. Thank you for everything that you do. And with that, the teachers of the Hillsborough Education Association have made a donation to our Oregon Education Foundation in your name, recognizing the school board recognition month of January. And I wanted to tell you a little bit about the OEA Foundation. I know many of you know what that is, but the foundation, the Oregon Education Foundation was established in 1995, and it provides educators with up to $100 grants for each child that is in need to meet the basic urgent and immediate needs so that they can succeed in school. Since the creation, the foundation has contributed over $900,000 to Oregon students, to the educators to help the students. They have helped purchase countless pairs of eyeglasses, repaired a broken wheelchair, given winter coats, paid for dental work and doctor visits, fitted lots of new shoes on lots of feet, and they even replaced a broken bedroom window. When it's all said and done, the OEA Foundation works to ensure that the physical, social, and emotional needs of students do not stand in the way of success in the schools. And so with that, I have a pin, a P-I-N, a pin that goes with the foundation. I want to give this to you as well. It's under $50, Mike. Sorry, Mike. Pardon me, but, you know, we like the two.
Thanks.
And it's not covered by chocolate.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for everything you do. We appreciate you.
Sorry, I'm picking my pin. It's very important to you.
I guess it's super tight.
Oh, they're not all the same.
I know, it says that.
I took the last pin. Why didn't you tell me earlier?
One of you just, it is late, so I'll be quick. We had the opportunity to engage in a student listening session over at Century High School, and as always, whenever we pull a group of diverse students together, I'm always impressed with what we, with what we hear from them and the suggestions that they give. They always have great suggestions for how we can improve our schools, and the more opportunities we have to listen to student voice, I think the better they do. Also, I had the opportunity to speak to an Avid class and pose a point of concern to them as part of the process they go through in Avid, and it was interesting to hear them do the problem solving on the problem that I presented to them. So the problem that was presented had to do with engagement at schools among all of our students, and they had some great ideas that we will definitely be putting into place. Super proud of one of our staff, or one of our students and staff members who took part in the legislative summit that we had last week. We had students there that just spoke from the heart and, in my opinion, stole the show and had a huge applause after her contribution. So it was exciting to see her kind of rise to the challenge and then have her moment. That was awesome. And finally, I'm going to end with something that never happened, and we're going to thank the tech guy in the audience. So Devin, I'm glad you brought up what was going on with all of the hardware that we're deploying as part of our, as part of our bond. Something that we've talked about, at least in cabinet in the past, is that it is really rare when someone calls technology and really the only answer they want to hear is yes. Whatever the question they have is, all they want is a yes from that. And Don has worked to build a culture in technology where, while it's not always yes, he's always figuring out, is there a way to get to yes? And I appreciate that. With all of the technology that we have to deploy, Don has a big value around working to understand the needs of the folks that are going to be accessing that technology. If it's, if it's staff members, he wants to make sure that it's going to be a tool that's utilized in an effective manner. And if it's for students, he wants to make sure that it's not just a shiny object that's in their hand, but it's something that's actually improving their engagement and for teachers is improving their instruction. So Don, just a shout out to you and all of the work that I know that you're going to be involved with as we move forward to the implementation of these bond dollars. Much appreciated, so thank you.
Okay, Board of Directors time, so you get to go first, Jackie?
I know. Sorry.
Got your pin.
Mark brought me the box, so I got to pick.
Aw.
So thank you, Mark. First of all, thanks. Thank you very much, very thoughtful. The swag bag, I can't wait to go through it. I'm really excited. The, this, what do we call this?
Black.
Black, thank you. Just beautiful. I'm overwhelmed. It's wonderful. I wanted to thank everybody who came and spoke tonight. I know that this policy change is very important to everyone, and when I requested to revisit the policy, it resulted from so many conversations with people in the community. And I want to assure everyone that I take it very seriously when I requested that we revisit it. And I actually have read, listened to, and watched all the previous testimony as well as, you know, the current ones that we have. And so I just want to assure everyone that this is something that before I brought it up, I did take very seriously and was very thoughtful about it.
Martin?
It's my pleasure on the 22nd of January yesterday to attend the grand opening of the Dream Center at Portland Community College Rock Creek Campus. The Dream Center is, provides a safer space for our undocumented slash documented community. The center is dedicated to helping students achieve their academic goals, gain leadership skills, and have access to financial and/or legal support. Furthermore, when the Rock Creek president, Sandra Fowler-Hill, gave her ribbon-cutting remarks, she highlighted the support that the Hillsborough School District has given the DACA, the Dream Center, as it went through inception and ultimately wound up with a footprint there on the Mall there at PCC Rock Creek. And it was just really a good event. To come together, really, it's about education of all of our kids, including that community. And so it's nice to be a part of their success at, you know, the PCC level. And it fits very nicely with our career and college pathways, our overall success of meeting the needs of every student. So kudos to the Hillsborough School District for their partnership with PCC that produced the Dream Center. And a thank you, Mike, for your leadership on that figure. And I also, you might know that I have a day job at Washington County, so I move in Washington County in circles. And the Washington County Health Department says, "School Exclusion Day is Wednesday, February 21st. Washington County Public Health officials are reminding parents to make sure their children's immunizations are up to date. Any child without the required immunizations or an exemption certificate will not be allowed to attend school or childcare on or after that day until they provide documentation of immunizations or exemption." And it should be noted that our school-based health center provides lots of immunizations and, you know, exams for participation in extracurricular activities. So it's an important part of our service delivery. And I yield the floor. Ma'am.
Thanks, Martin.
I just wanted to touch in a little bit again about the conversations that we had with students at Century and how eloquent they are and how smart and just so confident in their responses, and they're so impressive, especially with the fact that I asked what, if using technology to get their feedback would be something that they want, and they were like, no, we want a person to talk to. And I was like, I was really blown away by that, and it really touches to the core of what we say about knowing each student by name, strength, and need, and that's really what they're always wanting, is to have a connection with a caring adult. And I thought that just cemented that belief in me, and so it's really nice to hear that.
Yeah, returning to the same session, it was pretty amazing. Not to repeat what they said, I'll just expand to say, you know, the primary thing that the motion I left with was hope that these kids are so well-spoken, so eloquent, when I'm old and dead and they take over the world, we're in very good hands. They're a very impressive group of people. But not yet, not yet. They're a very impressive group of people, so we have a lot to look forward to there. On a sort of personal and district-related note, I just want to celebrate one of our country's newest Marines, private first-class, oh, I got to sit up. Trying to think of that one. Private first-class Gigi Gruber graduated from Century High School in June, and she graduated from Marine Corps Boot Camp at Paris Island on Friday.
Semper Fi.
She's been like the second daughter of me since I met her in fifth grade, and both my father and all of his brothers were Marines, so I think her and the 53 other amazing young women that she graduated with, they're serving our country.
Wanted to update you all, I spent the weekend with LPC members from around the state, and I'm just really excited. There were a lot of new members in that group, and you know, LPC or LPC plus OSBA board members. And we'll be doing weekly check-ins during the short session, so if you have questions along the way, I'll do my best to be able to answer them. And then we're, right now, our main work is actually working on priorities and policies for the next long session, and so you'll see that work continue through the spring and into the summer. I'll try to keep up to date on that. I have the privilege of representing the LPC and going to DC the first weekend of February, where we have meetings on the Hill. A lot of our work will be focused on advocating for fully funding IDA, reviewing the Perkins Grant, and we're a little, we arrive the week of the next budget deadline, and so we're just, we're hoping that everybody keeps their meetings with us, that they have the schedule. Thank you for all the board appreciation pieces. I was telling my kiddo worked on this, and if he did, he kept a really good secret, spent a lot of time in those shops. Just really nice. And my only reflection tonight on the school-based health center, I did read all the media over the weekend, and I disagree with former board member Monty Akers. Monty and I see eye to eye on a lot of things, but the school-based health center in my mind provides valuable resources for the physical, mental, and dental care of our students. The only, I have not had an opportunity to speak with a doctor there since I returned this weekend, but I know at Eberton, where they follow Oregon State law, only 13% of the patients they see are requesting advice about contraceptions, which means that 87% of those kiddos are getting services that they need to be healthy and in our schools. There are also services that our state and federal elected officials can't figure out how to solve. And so if we can provide one little nook and cranny of providing healthcare services for underserved population so that they can stay in school and be successful, I'm all for that.
First thing on my list, I definitely understand the irony of my lecture upstairs. We're not going to interact, and then I just big fat did it. I did, and I should not have done that, and I know that, and it was a, you say something, and then you're like, oh, gosh, and you think after. So do as I say, not as I do, and I will be better. That was, that was a mistake that I, it happened before I could even stop myself, and it will not happen again. You cannot possibly be more disappointed in me than I am myself, and you also cannot possibly be more frustrated than I am. So you don't, you also, you're welcome to lecture me later, but I don't need you to. I got it under control.
If there's a couple of problems, I'll let you later.
Oh, okay. It's, I told you guys, it's really, it's difficult, but nonetheless.
Are you fine?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the first thing on my list. The second thing, so at our most recent discussion, Martin brought up the idea of having coffee chats with board members and that being part of our kind of outreach as a group, and so Mike and I were discussing it at our most recent check-in. We realized that we, we thought that that could probably happen, but we didn't really have a lot of feedback from everybody about if that was something everyone was interested in. So I just am kind of interested in like a thumbs up, thumbs down. Is that something that you guys are interested in us pursuing? Martin, I know that you are because it was your idea. Jackie?
And this would be separate from the superintendent coffee chat?
So it'd be like a board, we'd probably buddy up, and we'd do two board members. And maybe, I mean, if everybody seeks to be on board, we'd talk more about like how often they knew me. Sounds like yes, okay. Right. The third thing on my list, I'm really excited for our next meeting when we get to do our interviews with the applicants to fill over vacancy. It would be nice to have our seventh person, and I am really excited about our list of candidates. It was such a daunting task to sift through all those sort of people as it is, and when I, the thing that I hinted you when I was like, gosh, how am I going to ever do this, was really, I can trust in this list that we're not going to end up with a bad new board member, like, we're not going to, any of these people would be able to do the job and do it well enough. And I think that the people that we have on our list, based on what we have so far in information, any of them would just do an outstanding job. So I'm really excited about getting to know them a little bit better and going through that process with people. I'm really excited for the appreciation gifts. This is, I think, the most showered in gifts that we've ever been in my time on the board. I can't believe this plaque thing. I'm so worried about how I was going to display it, how will I handle it? And then there's this cool holder, and it's, it is so cool. And there's like a huge bag, it's just amazing, and it's really nice because these are things that we can look at all year long, you know, because most of the time, people don't just say, oh, thanks so much for the work that you guys are doing. Most people, you know, see us kind of, why do you want to talk to me? And they go away. So it's really nice to be able to have these things that you can look at. And then the last thing, so we, during our meeting, that measure 101 appears to have passed in the state of Oregon. I'm really excited about what that means for us in terms of moving forward with our budget. Really, basically, that just means that we don't have to grasp the straws and try to keep ourselves afloat as our, you know, scooping out the water as our ship sails. So there's definitely a lot more way, there's a lot, we have a lot further to go, and I'm really excited for the updates that came over from the LPC and hope that the legislature gets us somewhere a little bit closer to sustainable and a little bit closer to where we want to be with things like class size, for example. So I'm really hopeful moving forward that we'll make some headway with that. And with that, we are pretty close to our time. We're a little bit over, but considering all the public comment that we had, I'm really excited that we're not too far over time. So we will next meet again on February 13th for a work session, and we will be interviewing the four applicants. Okay, so we'll adjourn.